Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to the regular meeting of the council. I say regular, but I hesitate briefly because this is not a regular spot. So I hope everybody hears me, and they're trying yelling tonight that everybody does hear me. This took a lot of work to set up and provide you a place for us to be all to be here, so that we didn't have to move to the complex to someplace else. So I want to thank John and Neil Hartburg for setting up the microphones. And I would also like to thank Michelle Lucci, Chris Smith, Chelsea Jim, and Owen Jaggers, who were staff for taking the time all day today to set this up. It was not an easy task. I'm going to begin with a recognition. So in a minute, then we're going to come down to the floor and recognize one of our assistants. James Silvermore Hudson. On behalf of the council and the entire community, I would like to extend our sincere thanks to James Silvermore Hudson for his dedicated service as the crossing guard of the Town of Elmer. Thank you. You know, kind of weathered, he has helped and saved the art dealer and families. He gave everyone a friendly smile and impressed. His commitment to the wellbeing of our community has not gone unnoticed. And his role has made a meaningful difference in the lives of many. As James moves on to new opportunities, we wish him all the very best in the future and thank him again for his service to Elmer. So thank you for coming.
I just wanted to take it off to me to say a few words. I won't think of much time because we have our agenda. I've started this role, I've run this since I was James for being the crossing guard of the Town of Elmer. And this was James, this was James' first job. And I want to say how proud I am of him. I know at the beginning, there was some hesitation. There were people that thought James might not be able to do this, but James advocated for himself. He knew he had a strong group of supporters, myself included, that believed he could do this job. And after a trial, she can get him to do it. He's done a wonderful, wonderful job this way, but he's third season. I kept getting feedback from Elmer Hall saying people are calling him here, you know, saying how wonderful the crossing guard is. He's always smiling. He's always saying hi. And he's making sure that the kids are safe. So I know he took a lot of pride in this. I just want to say thank you along behind myself and along with the whole guys. So thank you very much, James.
So let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect.
Thank you. Item three, required line of confirmation of the agenda resolution. The Red Council adopts the agenda for the meeting of October 15, 2025, with the additions of the following correspondence related to the Old Town Hall and Elmer Library Expansion, package one, two, three, and four, as item 5.4.1, with subsequent item street number accordingly. Also, the addition of delegations from Brianna Caffernans, Nick Johnson, Cynthia Grant, Logan Henderson, Johnny Creason, and Lizzie Keesberg. Regarding the Elmer Library redevelopment project, we add it as item 5.3.1. And additionally, the item ECC board follow-up relocation of Elmer Library, of the Elmer County Library to the ECC, we move to immediately follow consideration of SAB report CAO 43-25. And additionally, the presentation from JPM Architecture Incorporated, we move to immediately follow public delegations.
Thank you, Lourenz Seidman. Councilor Flatt, and Mr. DeGroot again. All those in favor? Very good. Thank you. Are there any declarations of community area interest? Seeing none, we want your delegations and public meetings. We have our committee of adjustments. First of all, we need a resolution to recess and commence under the committee of adjustment.
The council does now recess and commence the committee of adjustment meeting at 7:07 PM.
Lourenz Seidman, Councilor Harper, and Councilor Chapman. All those in favor? Going to do that again. I see two sets. Thank you very much. Does Carrie?
If committee of adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convenient, consider application for minor variance A06/25. Additional information related to the applications is available for inspection between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM weekdays at Elmer Town Hall. Signed written submissions are accepted by the Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearing, and the sub submissions will be available for inspection by any interested party. If a party who is notified does not attend the hearing, the committee can proceed and the party is not entitled to any further notice of the hearing. Submissions are recalled for notice to be sent to clerks at town.elmer.woon.ca. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who have attended or represented at the hearing, those who have filed written requests to have the secretary for notice of the committee's decision. The committee will receive input in the following order: the presentation from the manager of planning and development, the agents or applicant members of the public, and staff and the clerk. Application 06-25 is made by 2660711 Ontario Incorporated, Jacob Penner, as the owners of the property in municipally as 1113 Pierce Street in the Town of Elmer. The purpose of this variance is to enable the owner to subdivide a semi-detached residential building currently under construction into individual ownership. The variance will permit relief from the following in the zoning bylaw: increase the driveway width from six meters to 7.3 meters for each of the seven detached units; encroachment of a soup and exterior stairs to a required rear yard from 1.5 meters to two meters for each semi-detached unit; and an increase in the mass on lot coverage from 35% to 48.49%.
Thank you. Could the manager of planning and development please provide a report?
Thank you, your worship. If we may just go to figure one of my report. Figure one shows a marital photograph of the property. This property is located at the corner of Pierce Street and Oak Street. Currently vacant, actually depression, currently in semi-detached, so it's currently under construction on the property. Moving on to figure two, shows the proposed minor variance. In terms of consultation, the minor variance is circulated to all towns, staff, or comments. No comments of concern received. The application was also circulated to all public agencies and all municipal property owners of the residential area. No comments or receipt. Moving on to the analysis of the minor variance, section 45 of the Planning Act allows the maintenance of 200 minor variance to a zoning bylaw based on a four test that follows. The first test is, does the variance maintain the intended purpose of the official plan? And yes, it does. The property is designated for density residential, which permits a range of housing types such as a semi-detached dwelling. The second test is, does the variance maintain the intended purpose of the zoning bylaw? And yes, it does. The current zoning on the property, residential type two, R2, permits semi-detached dwellings. The intent of establishing a maximum driveway width, maximum encroachment, and your required rear yard and a maximum lot area is to ensure that a lot is not entirely covered in hardtop and or buildings and provide enough land state area and sufficient permeable area in the front and rear yards. This proposal, proposed requests are minimal, minimal for this proposal. Except for the requests of the requested variance, the proposal meets all other hardcover regulations. Third test is, does the variance request it is a harmful, inappropriate, or even open use of the lanes and buildings? And yes, it is. The variance will enable the owner to subdivide the semi-detached residential units into individual ownership. Increase in driveway width will enable the owner to provide parking for proposed additional residential unit to the semi-detached units. The bar increase in encroachment and required rear yard will enable the owner to have access to the rear yard from the interior of each of the units. Lastly, the increase in lot coverage enables the owner to meet the required series of outdoor setup for the former lot. And the fourth and final test is, does the variance consider minor nature? The meaning of minor is not based on a specific number. It's more appropriate to base this test on the degree of potential impact that may bring property owners, the environment, and the municipal calendar functions. For this proposed variance, the impact is minimal with respect to the environment, municipal function, and surrounding property owners. So in conclusion, according to the opinion, the proposed application for minor variance is desirable for the appropriate development in the city lands, meets the intended purpose of the official plan policies and zoning bylaw regulations, and recommend that the request of the proposed application for the minor variance of A06-25 be approved, subject to no concerns coming forward tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is the applicant present? And if so, do you wish to speak to the application? Sorry, I'll probably end up to see you. Nobody ever paid attention. If any members of the public are in attendance and wish to speak, please approach the podium one at a time. State your name and sign the identity for the record. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none? Does it go to proceed any further communication?
No, we're not.
Council, council have any questions for comments on this? Seeing none? Then we proceed to consider the following resolution, the re-recommended resolution.
That report plan 20-25, planning evaluation report, application for minor variance A06-25, 1113 Pierce Street, be received. And that the application for minor variance A06-25 seeking relief of the zoning bylaw for the following: that the driveway width shall be 7.3 meters for each of the semi-detached units, and that the maximum encroachment of a soup and exterior stairs into a rear yard shall be two meters for each of the semi-detached units, and that the maximum lot coverage shall be 40 or 49% for parcel fee.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I guess you have Lourenz Seidman for this resolution. So we have Lieutenant Barry Harper, Councilor Chapman, all those in favor? And then it's Carrie. Thank you. Would not be a resolution to move back into council?
The council does now reconvene at 7:15 PM.
Lourenz Seidman, Councilor Drilby, and Councilor Chapman, all those in favor? And it's Carrie. Thank you. Now we move to... Something new, the introduction of the Old Town Hall and Elmer Library Expansion. And I think we'll see a little over a few comments before we start this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly address a couple of points before we do begin tonight, as there's been a lot of information. I think we had 93 submissions, which might be a record for us. But I'm hopeful that if we address a couple of points off the top, we can maybe get through it a little quicker tonight. The first point is that the Town of Elmer's budget process focuses on the principles of citizen engagement and transparency. So this term of council is roughly two months away from finalization of their last budget, being the 2026 budget. Elmer, like most Ontario municipalities, is facing a lot of pressures with the 2026 budget. Those pressures are outlined in detail and are a matter of public record. They can be reviewed by citizens at their leisure at the town's budget website. It's important to note, though, that there are no additional funds within the 2026 budget assigned to the library redevelopment project. So I don't want the public to be under the impression that tonight's discussion has any impact on the 2026. Well, yes, it does not. The second point that I want to make for the public is that tonight's decision does not represent a final decision on this issue. What is before council tonight represents options, any of which they may choose to further develop for the benefit of the 2026 to 2023 term of council. Legislatively, an outgoing council cannot find an incoming term to significant decisions. Last week, we heard at the ECC that that capital option would also represent a 2027 capital project. That makes sense because there is a lease with the county for this building to 2028. The all capital timelines extend beyond the current term of this council. Again, the last budget of this current council is the 2026 one, which we anticipate will be finalized in December. To provide some further context, the current council has approximately 10 months before they could be in the waiting up scenario, and exactly 13 months from today, their office will cease. So while there still are a lot of positive things this council can deliver for the community, every potential capital timeline for the library redevelopment project will extend beyond this term's decision-making. So I'll just wanted to stress those for the public tonight, as this does represent an important decision-making point tonight on the work that staff will be undertaking over the next year on this, but there are no impacts on the 2026 budget. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just what, thank you very much. Although, if you want to add that although we cannot commit to this council to any substantial funds, we can get pretty close and do it tonight. So we can have a movement that puts the library on a total repast, or not. But we still can make significant change. As far as delegations, we have a lot of delegations, and I will remind them that delegations are 10 minutes, and they will be timed. There will be no questions about it, where it's from council or from the public. So we want to move through the delegations. But we begin with Mr. Mike Sariah of APAC, considering the Old Town Hall and the Elmer Library Expansion. Mike?
Good evening. Mayor Crockett, councillors, Elmer staff, the state. My name is Mike Sariah. I've lived and worked in Elmer, so be hired by the out and gone boarders pageant to teach for Davenport in 1976. On behalf of the Elmer Department Arts Council, my representation night, we thank you for the opportunity to present on the proposals before you for renovations for building of a new library and changes to the Old Town Hall. APAC is not taking a position on the future of the library in the Old Town Hall in this presentation. That's going to be decided in another forum. We will have more to say about it at that time. Our primary concern is to ensure that the Old Town Hall remains a viable presence within our community for generations to come. We worry that without our concerted community-based effort, the Old Town Hall will be lost to the public space for all who enjoy it. We're here to present information for council's consideration related to the three proposals before you and provide you with all those requests of renovations to the hall, if you choose to proceed in that way. We've had the opportunity to discuss the various proposals with mayor within APAC itself. We have received the architect's proposals and have had an opportunity to review them. So kind of a history of APAC and the Old Town Hall. APAC has been providing live performance of the Old Town Hall stage, this stage, for well over 30-plus years. In that time, we've brought to our community world-class Canadian entertainment in various formats. We developed a reputation amongst performers and our audience for presenting quality performances in a friendly, community-based atmosphere in one of the most intimate venues in Canada. The sound quality and the performance space is second to none. Performers love this space. Comment out and call us to perform here at 30 AM. Ticket prices for our current concert series format have remained at exceptional value, with our current series being $175 for seven tickets. That's $25 a ticket. Try to imagine that anywhere else. Kids &amp; Company has maintained their ticket price at $10. Half of our Kids &amp; Company tickets are donated to sponsors who are giving at no cost to members of the community. We've been able to do that because of the consent and steadfast support of our season ticket holders, the recent Old Town rent for space, and the generous sponsorships from the community. This year's sponsorship total was currently at $18,250 from approximately 24 individuals, businesses, and service club sponsors. Our season has sold out at 185 seats with a waiting list. This speaks to the overwhelming support for live performance in our community. Currently, APAC utilizes this space more than any other single user, with nine shows being offered between APAC and Kids &amp; Company. We have patrons who follow us from across the province and ancient USA. No tariffs included. Our guests on show night are out of local restaurants, shop downtown, purchase fuel, visit local attractions. They send money supporting local businesses by coming to the Old Town Hall. APAC utilizes only local businesses for our performance needs, meals for performers, hotel rooms, advertising needs and the such. We recruit Canadian talent, including a wide range of southern Ontario performers. In short, we support the community through our work. Our patrons support the community by their tenants. Our sponsors support the community by giving generously. Plus, you get complimentary local appetizer, every show, or cookies that are from our local papers on the final show. Try to imagine that at the Old Town Hall. In short, the Old Town Hall takes Elmer, the area, into a great place to call home and visit. Now, having said that, we do have some concerns over the current configuration space, so we hopefully address if one of the options is chosen and the renovations occurred at this space. The current space has functional issues: inadequate washrooms, no general lobby or congregating space, no ability for catering or alcohol service, limited capacity of our underneath by seat because of the current main floor layout. Issues identified by AVM, linked to the current configuration incorporated, and can't be resolved within this current space. An addition or reimagining of the entire facility is required to meet the needs of a modern performance space. So what are our requests? If it's a newly renovated performance space, is envisioned for the Old Town Hall? Well, improve the central washrooms on the performance space levels to the second level, a reimagined and redesigned lobby for the performance space, infrastructure suitable for catering and hospitality functions, a design that respects the heritage of the performance space, utilizes the current windows and natural lighting, maintains the exceptional aesthetics of the hall, and preserves the heritage aspects of the space. UDJ is an example. All of the items identified are needed, with the hall spaces to meet its potential as a multi-use near the space. If the Elmer Library doesn't remain as an anchor tenant, and a suitable long-term tenant would need to be found to replace it, without a long-term stable tenant for the main floor of the Old Town Hall, the future of the performance space very likely leaves in all other groups and generations. An option would be to dedicate the entire facility, both floors, to a multi-use community center, but frankly, that is looked at as such a plan would be supported globally. None of the plans before each and I contemplate that possibility. So our preferred design, in APAC's opinion, options two and three would do not need to support the Old Town Hall, and we have chose not to comment on them too. Option one, design that utilizes a portion of the parking lot to the west of the Old Town Hall and incorporates a raised walkway to the second level of the current space, while in addition, mostly meets our needs in APAC's opinion, community at large. The renovation to the Old Town Hall and new construction provision by option one was part of deficiencies identified by AVM. If a decision is made, it can be with the libraries and any tenant. Features such as a dedicated entrance, additional accessible washrooms, elevator, lobby space, and the ability to utilize a large common space on the second level of the addition will enhance the experience of our patrons and library users alike. If council chooses to report with one of these signs, and if option one is chosen, that preferred side, then we'd welcome the opportunity to give a more detailed analysis and process of the other proposals. Part of the process. Few final thoughts. APAC is aware of the significant costs undertaken to such a project, but we believe that if we truly value the heritage aspects of our community, then bold moves by council and the community at large are required to enhance our community for generations to come. Once a decision is made by council or forward a plan, then fundraising through a variety of sources can begin. Let council endorse plan, fundraising is moot plan. Potential orders be a plan to get behind. Many of us in this from time are part of the community during the last period, but the future of the Old Town Hall is in jeopardy. I doubt there's a single individual here tonight doesn't recognize the importance of the Old Town Hall as a cultural and civic factor for our community. It took bold actions and political risk by the council today to ensure that the hall was reserved. It took citizens rallying around the vision of a restored Old Town Hall to save it. We're at such a moment again. This is a defining moment for our town, citizens, and current municipal leadership. APAC recommend council consider option one, prefer that option for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brianna Emmens.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Brianna Emmens, and I'm a resident of Elmer and a mother of three young children. I come from a family who has resided in Elmer since the 60s and has lived here their whole lives. I've lived here for 20 years on my own, and I just was able to recently move back to Elmer after living in some more horrible surrounding towns. I'm here tonight from the deeply concerned about the financial and practical direction of our town is taking with this proposed library project. We've heard talk of a 10% tax increase for 2026, but what about 2027? What if a project is over budget, as so many do nowadays, when other projects become a high concern? Will residents face another large inroads? At the October 8th East Elving Community Complex Board Meeting, I listened closely to everyone speaking in favor of the move and those who were not in favor. But this time, your comments didn't address real issues of affordability, accessibility, and long-term sustainability. These are issues that affect everyday families in mind in the future of this town. Let's start with recreation. Elmer awaits multiple facilities for four schools, including East Elving Secondary School that folds community sports and as bigger pivot ball. These are issues that affect everyday families in mind in the future of this town. The need isn't for more specialized downtown space, it's for facilities that remain affordable and accessible for everyone. On accessibility, anyone living outside of the immediate downtown has to drive to library at any point. Parking is already limited and with planned addition options that takes away part of the parking lot that is behind the library. As among three little ones, I can't find a spot. I'm forced to park across the street, and then I have a cross-dining street. It's a busy road with multiple blind spots just to get to the library. That's not acceptable and thus added risk. Then there's affordability. Nearly half of Canadians, around forty-seven, fifty percent, are living paycheck to paycheck and extra thirty, fifty, or a hundred dollars a month in property tax to make the difference between staying above and falling behind. Constantly raising taxes doesn't just hurt homeowners, it raises people's rents, affects local businesses, and takes more spending power out of residents' pockets and our town's economy. If we truly want to invest in our community, there are better ways to use the millions of dollars. Investment cards, repair the pool, but everyone can agree that needs work towards the food bank and community programs that help locals of all ages. Or even introduce a small-town bus group, maybe two days a week, to help residents get to the library and to no-erels at the other end of town. When it comes to culture, I absolutely believe in preserving the old town hall. But we can preserve it without bankrupting the town. Let's repurpose it into something beautiful and sustainable, a space for weddings, art shows, fundraisers, community gatherings, book clubs, a place where everyone can come together. The truth is, businesses like no-erels and HomeHarbor have moved to the outskirts of town because that's where the space is, and it was seen, and people still manage and people still get it. A library can do the same. It can be anger, as long as it's open, welcoming, and financially responsible. So I ask you tonight, please send for the families, the seniors, and the taxpayers who are trying to make ends meet. A library should serve everyone, not be the one that drives taxes higher year after year and pushing people to not remain as residents of Elmer. Let's be financially smart and put a stop to spending more on plans of bringing the addition to the library that literally is not an affordable role. The restoration of the old town hall and the creation of a modern library are two separate goals. Let's start off treating them as if they are the same. This project of keeping the library in the town hall represents the wants of a few and now the needs of the whole town. Thanks to the council.
To Nick Johnson, please. Nick Johnson? Nick Johnson, again?
Here.
Sorry, did you see your movie? Sorry.
Thank you, Clarence, council, and everyone else. I'm going to read my shortlist statement in support of the downtown library. I wrote it in a formal letter to the town. Hey, Elmer, if you don't take this chance to build the downtown library, it will not be because you have fortune. It will be because we don't want to, because we don't see the value of it. Compared with the church, or the school, or a sports building. Maybe you think a library is just somewhere to go borrow a book or use a computer when the need arises. It is much more than that. A library is a place and a gathering of people and an intention for thought and imagination and discovery. It is like nothing else in the town and is available and open to everyone for all of its opening hours. A library is a core value to the town, not fringe. And that's where it should be, in the center where town life is concentrated and people are coming and going. Nowhere else on the land that is ready-made for next to the old town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. I've sent you a friend.
So it's wonderful to see so many people out for a meeting. Back in April seventh, the Elmer Express hosted a public forum. We had more people there, dozens more, about a hundred and sixty people, I think. And anybody could speak at that event. It was quite lovely, and people did speak. Most people favored keeping the library downtown. It's not the same people out tonight, and that's fine. What's disturbing is what's triggered some interest right now. And part of that is misinformation spread on Facebook, and I'll come to that here and there. So, um, last Wednesday, Kirk Behrens and I spoke to the East Elgin Community Complex Board. And we, along with others, are against moving to the E E C C. Um, we don't think it's an appropriate space. Um, accessibility for children and seniors is a big issue. Um, lots of it was gone over at the time. Kirk is far more eloquent on this than I am. And the board decided to request more information about the cost to locate, to relocate there. And that's a very reasonable step. We need facts, and that's what should guide us all, including councilors, of course. And I'd like to laud the council on seeking those facts. And tonight, we're getting more facts from the design proposals. Um, uh, the design proposals cost us fifty thousand dollars, not two hundred and fifty thousand, as suggested by one counselor. Um, so we have some valuable information. Information I didn't know. I find the numbers sobering. Uh, the analysis of cost indicated some, um, that it's a significant expenditure, like buying a home for an individual or a family. This is a big one. Um, and just like a family, we need to look at timing and cost and need. Our family is getting much bigger. I'm sure you all see it in the new housing, um, in the new industrial park, and I'm going to speak to that right at the moment. Because we've been spending a lot of money as a community. And kudos to the council who have guided such massive projects as the Lagoons, the Water Tower, Elm Street, no, it's an Elmer Elm, Elm. It's Elm. Oh, my gosh, I've lived here since my childhood, and I often have used part of those two. You know where the construction is, and that's all in the last three to four years. So what happened is around twenty twenty-three, we had a lot of money in our reserves. In fact, the province criticized Elmer and other communities for sitting on that money. So those projects I mentioned cost dozens of millions when you put them all together. So you're going to see a graph move down rapidly. Um, that's, um, that's called the reserves, and we were sitting on a lot. Now, of course, sitting on, and I know the word sitting must offend people who work in finance. I apologize for that colloquialism. But according to Heather Sachs, our, I believe she's our CFO uh, in charge of finances, in her October first report to the finance committee, uh, she has estimated that the reserve balance is currently twelve point eight five million. It's not zero, as some people are starting to think. That's on page five of her report. Um, you'd like to always have enough money in your bank to buy another house, wouldn't you? But as individuals, it doesn't happen, and it won't happen for the town. Um, but back to the library. Think about this. If we had built beside the library in twenty fourteen, we came very close to doing it. It would be a facility not only paying for itself with the mortgage payments, but the mortgage would have been pretty much paid off from now, if not totally paid off. So I am relying on our local former math teacher, Larry Jeffries. He's here tonight. He tells me this. I respect him, and you could run the numbers and see that that is the case. So, you know, now we're at the same point. We don't have more money. I'm checking my time. What we do know is that any loss of the downtown library will have an adverse, negative effect on the businesses and life of the downtown. The hauling out of downtowns, I'm addressing the audience because actually the councilors know this. The hauling out of the downtown is real. It happens to places. You start seeing empty stores and downtown decay. Dorothy Broua has written about this eloquently in a letter to the editor several months ago. Um, and we have to avoid that. We have to keep the library as accessible to our children and most especially our schools. If you look at Elmer Express this week, former teacher Susan Graves has written a letter speaking of this. Is she here tonight? Susan Graves. I heard her say this at the mayor's town hall, and it's really convincing. If you can have kids come as a class into a space like this wonderful library, it makes a difference to them for their entire lives. Many of us went to the Darnaby Library as children, and we remember it, and it helped us become who we are. Um, yeah, I grew up here. So my, my mother grew up on a farm in Summers Corners, and my dad in Stratford though. So my roots are very long here. Um, and you know what? Both of those people went through the depression. I get money, and I hear now what's happened in this debate. Um, and I'll come back to that at the end. So the designs are on the table. I'm going to have to speed up. Design one is fascinating. Mike Serita has spoken about it and how it could provide a lobby. Um, but it's kind of fancy. I believe we could, um, uh, suggest some alterations. We could utilize the downstairs space in the, in this building as both a library by day and a lobby by night, because you push back a few things and you've got your lobbies. Um, I think it's worth talking to designers about that. And, uh, that's called dual usage, and it's an efficiency. The second design is standalone building in bare parts. Some people quite like that still. Details could be worked through. Um, I have a couple of suggestions on that. The third one, if you look at all the drawings, the third one's over in the municipal parking lot. I don't think people will go for that. No. It's not going to fly, so I'm not going to prolong my talk about that. I also have to be cognizant of time. So how is that decision going to be made? First and foremost, Elmer must approve the renovations for this building. And that can't be delayed further. We have an IRC engineers report on that. And we can keep the library functional during that time. People don't want a tax increase. So I get it. Uh, but we need to look at some of the aspects of the finer points of this. Thirty-eight cents of every residential property tax goes to the county. I was stunned by that, and I fact-checked it today with the town. That is shocking, and the county is our tenant in this situation. If they want more space, they have to pony up. They need to commit to a partnership and figure out how best to gain more space, whether it's here or elsewhere. The elsewhere should not be the E E C. That's my opinion. People have other opinions. Some people like coffee. I've never been in the ritz here in town. People use different things. I was in the library five times this week. Like, I'm a crazy kind of person that way. Um, and I think we should keep the library where it is. Keep it, use it. It's intimate. It's a wonderful experience. The library can use the upstairs here. Chris May, who was our librarian for more than thirty years, often used the upstairs. She also used the van shelf. This is something that could be done by the current library when they have groups or they want to run programs. So I'm realizing I'm going to have to speed it up. In closing, please get moving on repairs to the roof and foundations of this, our old town hall. It's our crown jewel. I think the citizens should speak out about the county relationship monetarily. I hope the Elmer Express will pursue this. Um, one of the letters to the editor asks the same questions I am raising. Um, so don't infer it, but think about it. It's something that we have to plan for because we're becoming a very big community. And I'm going to leave it at that. I, you know, people are tired of hearing you speak about.
Thank you. Now, Logan Henderson.
Good evening. It's very kind of you. Really. Okay. Okay. So, as a young adult in Elmer, I am concerned about this, this proposal for a couple of different reasons, one of which for sure is, is going to be property taxes in the future. Over the last three years, property taxes, the tax levels have gone up thirteen, ninety percent. As someone who's looking to buy a house in this town, because it is a great town, right? It has to be a great tax-informed preserve too. But it can't be at the top of the tax future. You know, so with all these, with all these different projects, the budget is important. And I think that can be a main concern. You can do things, you can do things, you can preserve history. You can potentially move it. You have a lot of different options, but then first and foremost, it should be about the budget because things are getting more affordable. Baby, they live it, and everybody feels it. And every time I look, every year I look at houses in Elmer, I see it further and further, like these property taxes increases. And this project has the potential, if it is mishandled, to make everything worse. I think that's something to consider. I think a lot of people are concerned about that. People who currently own homes are concerned about that. And I would like to thank you very kindly. Thank you for hearing me out on this. And I think whatever project you do go with should have very careful budget considerations, and it should be, should be well viable.
Thank you. We have Johnny Frisen.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Johnny Frisen. And I'm here to speak not as a person that's talking about the hypotheticals of underprivileged children that can't walk to the, uh, to the library, to people that don't have access to vehicles and things like that. Because I was a child. I grew up in this town from grades one to twelve. In fact, Mary Duck, if you were my principal, and I'm like, you still get it? And, uh, Mr. Serita, you were in Dadport, I believe. I remember you jump rope with heart with you, and I remember your short shorts thing, and that was pretty badass. So this guy skipped it all day. So I grew up in these schools, and Valinsky was one of my other principals who's serving as council in Malai, which I own a farm in Malai, so I understand taxes not only in Elmer, but Malai and St. Thomas, where I have anchor properties. Um, as I grew up here, I was an immigrant. I moved here knowing very little English. And, uh, went to school, had amazing teachers, amazing school system, and just a great community. As I went to school here, I learned English, and we did not have a car until I was sixteen. In fact, we did not have a computer because I lived in low-income housing in Melanie Drive, which is commonly referred to as Little Iraq, because there was always war in that area, and there was never that peaceful and calm, okay? So I understand what this was. I had to walk to this library to do all of my schooling, all of it. And, uh, I love this place. I sat downstairs. I almost made to be emotional. I sat downstairs and I write books, animals, to do all of my, uh, what you know, all of my speeches, which I'm obviously not that good at, and I'm gladly pushing to build my confidence. As I came here, I had no access to a vehicle. We didn't have a car until I was sixteen, so I had to literally walk. So I had to literally walk to this place as a little child. My mom was paranoid and had safer streets back in the nineties, as you would all agree, than we do today. I will not let my little girls walk here and I live down Sydney Street. We will truck them over here, we'll drive them, we'll walk them with them ourselves, okay? As I went to, to the library here, I met amazing people. And James, thank you for your service. And William, thank you for putting this into action to activate somebody to give you my role. Donna Layton was one of our crossing guards back then. We used to swear, there was little children, because that's what you do as children. You say rude things to crossing guards, like, oh, that doesn't happen to you. And if they do, we're giving them, be kind to them. Because one day she was here using the computers and she said, Johnny, can you help me? And I said, yes. I helped her use a computer and she taught me how to not have a victim mentality. Growing up poor and not having the coolest clothes and all the stuff that everybody else had, okay? So from that note right there, she started, she, and she was one of my first mentors that I had in this community. From this library, walking distance from where I lived. And so from that note right there, she's an angel to me, God rest her beautiful soul. She's an amazing thing. And she was also parking attendant, which people hate her for as well. Everybody calling it was her here, writing room, a few town people. You know me, I'm a Realtor here in town. That all being said, we do have to realize something. That times have changed. Times have changed and are changing. We have access to these things. I read my speech from this, which I also helped render and made it more palatable through AI. AI is changing everything that we do. We see and we have access to computers. With all this technology in our schools, there's not computers everywhere. And nowadays, we don't have to just walk over here to these library spaces to use as like we did before. And in fact, most of the children that are attending this library, which is one of the most utilized libraries in this area, forty percent, are actually from homeschool kids, believe it or not. Ones that don't trust their school system anymore are using this library. I know about a hundred and twenty students that continuously come here along with my wife and my two little girls. And what they do is they go downstairs, they read and they use this as a community space. So I think the library is not so much a place to read books because we can access line Kindles and things like this. But it's more a place to join and gather and show community. Now, we don't have a problem, I assert everybody in my community from every walk of life and we love all of our town people. Getting back to, to the points here. For my story, it shows you what action happened for a person that cannot access via vehicles. Now we can access via vehicles different ways to get to different places. Being a Realtor in this town, I've also realized now how to utilize my finances. I went from being low, low income, paying no taxes, to being extremely high income with income properties here in town. We're landlords, we serve this community, we live here and we do a lot of charity and different things in this community. And we love this community for that. But we cannot let, we cannot let this. Sorry, I lost it. We can't let the idea of this beautiful heritage site overwhelm our citizens with a tax burden. I'm a Realtor also and our, our community is just being taxed so heavily. There's not a lot of money left on the table. I know that as a, as a top rated agent here in town, that people are struggling, they're struggling every single day just to buy food. When they see their grocery bill, that's a heavy burden. Taxing on the citizens is a rent that never goes away. Once it goes up, it doesn't come back down, right? So we have to be very careful when we do that. I would love it to stay here, I just don't think we can use it the way it sits. Parking is crazy, as has been mentioned. The whole town for working in town, all of the businesses that I deal with in town, they said that there's not enough parking. We can't overwhelm this space anymore as it is. As we draw more people to this community and into these spaces when we renew them or refresh them, it's gonna draw more, more interest. And we're just gonna be overwhelmed in the town for it, which means parking problems, which is the problem of every town. Now, one of the solutions to that is to have multiple nucleus in a town. So instead of one town center, you can have multiple spots, which then puts a lot less pressure on egress, people driving in and out of parking, which will then help to ease that burden. If we move west to the ECC, which has already been approved to an eight to five vote, I believe, we can save a lot of money. Jack Barrett will help build the Mount Salem Christian School. And they built thirty-eight thousand square feet for, I think it was nine point one million dollars, including nobody's taxes, that was from fundraising. So if we use our tax dollars and we move it over there and we use brilliant minds like this that have done this multiple times. Look at what he's done with the Elgin Innovation Center. They use the space for the businesses, which we thought that old tobacco plant that a lot of people worked at would be useless. They use that and expanded slowly. Businesses could expand slowly. So let's say we don't have the amount of people that will use the, the library. Maybe, maybe it stays a smaller size. Should it start to grow, we can expand. We have the space to expand, we have all the parking to expand. As housing moves west, we're opening up a new grocery store, we're opening up new businesses there. That nucleus will move that way. New residential sites will open up that way. And that will now become another walkable distance place. So I think we've got a lot of options for things like that if we do move into the ECC. Yeah, our deficits already, we're, we're not a good place for finances in this town. The complex was ready, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but we all know that was an issue. This is one way we can correct that. We could take a lot of, of the negatives of that place out by bringing some income to that place, bringing more infrastructure and potentially bringing more businesses to surround it to help it out. I think that we relocate to the ECC for sustainability and not downtown for prestige. Will make a better fiscal position and will also serve our community better in the long, long run. And especially today with everything rising through inflation, it's just so expensive. So that's what I have to say. Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it in Elmer.
Thank you. Lindsay, you can turn the light out. Pila now.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman and my fellow residents. I'm here speaking on behalf of my Strickland Lillian today, however, my opinion is the same. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lindsay Skisrep and I'm a long-term resident and one of these homeschool moms of the library. I care deeply about this town and the direction it's headed. I'm here today to express my strong opposition to the proposed new library project and to urge council to instead of focus on easing the financial burden on residents by working toward lowering property taxes and maintaining the important facilities we already have. Let me say this, I have great respect for what our library needs to the community. It's a place of learning, connection and opportunity. But building a brand new facility at this point in time is quite simply not what Elmer needs and certainly not what the taxpayers can afford. According to the figures that have been shared by the trailer, this project would raise property taxes by an estimated ten to twenty percent. For many families, seniors and small business owners in Elmer, that is not a small number. It's a serious financial hit. One that adds to the growing cost of living that many are already struggling with. We've reached a point where residents are being forced to make difficult decisions about their own household budgets. And yet, our local government seems poised to make decisions that will only make that struggle worse. That doesn't reflect responsible leadership, it reflects misplaced priorities. The truth is, our current library serves our needs. It may not be brand new, but it is functional, welcoming and well-loved. What we do have, however, are important community assets that need ongoing attention and investment. The ECC building, the Elgin pool and our existing library as it stands right now. These facilities are the heart of our community. They bring people together, provide real value and serve to be properly maintained before we consider taking on something new. And if there truly is a desire or a need for more library space, the ECC already has the sort of footage to accommodate that. It's a large, underutilized facility that could easily be adapted to house the library. That will allow us to expand library services without spending millions of taxpayer dollars on a brand new building. It's a practical, cost-effective solution that makes far more sense for a town our size. Now, I understand that one of the main arguments against using the ECC is that it's not located in the downtown core. But that alone is not a good enough reason to justify building an entirely multi-million dollar facility. Location preference should never outweigh fiscal responsibility, especially when every dollar spent comes directly from the pockets of Elmer residents. If the ECC can meet the community's needs at a fraction of the cost, then that option should be seriously considered. Accessibility, convenience and community connection can be achieved through thoughtful planning and partnerships, not by spending millions simply to keep a building in a certain area. Leadership often involves vision, a desire to build something lasting to leave behind a legacy. That's admirable in itself. But I would respectfully suggest that true legacy isn't about the buildings we construct. It's about the trust we build. It's about the confidence residents have and knowing your elected officials are listening to them and making decisions based on need, not ambition. The legacy this council could have, one that would be remembered far longer than any building, is one of the fiscal responsibility of listening to people, of strengthening Elmer from the inside out, not adding a new burden to its residents. A council truly wishing to leave something meaningful behind and make Elmer a model for good governance. A town that lives within its needs, that invests wisely and takes care of what it already has before building something new. It's time to focus on lowering the property taxes, not raising them. It's time to re-go to trust, not just infrastructure. In closing, I urge to pause and reconsider the project. Let's have a community-wide consultation and honestly ask residents what they value most right now. Let's maintain and improve the facilities we already have. The ECC, the pool and our existing library. And if expansion is truly needed, let's use the safety already owned to make it happen. I believe that people are the number one counsel that listens, that put practicality before prestige and that remembers that every dollar spent comes from the pockets of hardworking taxpayers. Thank you for your time and for considering what is best for the future of our town, not just the legacy of a few individuals, but the well-being of us all.
Thank you, now we have a resolution.
The nominations from Mike Cerita, Amy Evans, Nick Johnson, Cynthia Graham, Logan Henderson, Johnny Frisen and Lindsay Skisrep for delivering the Elmer Library Development Project, we receive their information.
Logan, second. Austin Barber and Constance Chapman. Those in favor? And the chair? The next thing deals with the JPM Architecture presenting their designs. Will we have it on the screen?
Good evening, can everybody hear me? Can you see the, see my screen?
Yes, I think we can hear you right. We can hear you as well. Everybody else, what you're requesting here.
Okay.
Is this Peg McDonald?
Yes, this is Peg McDonald. I'm an architect with JPM Architecture. And
Welcome, go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you to council for the opportunity to present these design options. And frankly, it's a pleasure to be involved in a project that generates so much community response. Because this kind of engagement, no matter what your concern is, shows just how much you value the place where you live. And what you have here is a really special building that has served Elmer for generations. And that good service, now as a library and a theater, has been made possible by the investment that the town has made in this particular building. So earlier this summer, JPM Architecture was asked to investigate three design options for the future expansion of the Elgin County Library Facilities to ten thousand square feet, based on the guidelines and recommendations from the Administration of Rural and Urban Libraries of Ontario. And the form of each of these options takes is an idea of what could be. As you'll see, all of the concepts here take design cues from the old Town Hall building. And all of the concepts are seated in the context of each site and give us unique and complimentary and companion ideas to explore. So I'm gonna go briefly through each design option with some background on the design decisions that were made. So option one. The big moves in this design actually came from a committee that was part of council, as I understand. So thank you to them for the starting point. This option envisions the expansion adding to the west or the back of the existing building and wrapping around to the south. The expansion is two stories on the western side, stepping down to one story at the south end. And it does take up some of the existing parking lots. The first floor of this option maintains the existing library where it is with the primary entrance as it is. And there's a secondary entrance to the addition set back along that landscape walkway from John Street South. Once you come in, there's an interconnected lobby atrium space at the back, open to this back exterior brick wall here. So the new library space is accessed, the door is directly opposite that central axis of the existing facility. And we've got the balance of the program. A secondary service and circulation desk, user seating, meeting rooms, the program room, maker space, study rooms, et cetera. On the second floor, that double height lobby atrium space connect, is connected to the theater where you are in right now with this glazed bridge corridor that's entered right off stage left. The second story of the library program here just includes additional collection and seating space. Watchrooms and an additional program room here are accessed directly off the atrium for use when a library is closed, for theater patrons or other community events. So in terms of the, the form of the design on the exterior, you can see here in this image how the new portion steps down and wraps around the building, staying back from the streets and preserving the prominence of the heritage building. That's the two-level atrium space is just visible right through here. And the overall pattern of this, of this bay design of the addition really reflects and comes from the rhythm of the, the bays on the Old Town Hall structure. So this vision just expands the glazing all the way between those columns. And this glazing pattern is, is also derived from the windows of the existing building. We've got two narrow tall pines flanked by four small side lights. And the heads and the sills of these windows match those on the existing building. In this image here, you can see this connector bridge that hangs out over Cooper's Alley and includes that fire escape stair down to the street level. The upper level atrium in this little sketch just allows visitors to get up close with that heritage facade and gives you a feeling for how that space could be. Got some clear story lighting coming in from the west side. For materials for this option, we're proposing a glass fiber reinforced concrete panel. It's a very lightweight, very durable panel that has a nice warm color scheme that blends with the shades and tones of the heritage brick. So this visually connects those two buildings, but with colored, while providing a contrast in scale. For option two, this is the library in the Farc. And this is a separate building next to the Old Town Hall building. This is a companion to it. So the main entrance to this building steps back from the street and faces Old Town Hall. This cutback allows for a better view of the existing building from the intersection of John Street South and Sidney Street West. The lobby entrance faces the circulation desk and is, can be directly accessed to an elevator and to some nice spacious stairs that are designed to encourage people to use those to walk up to the second level. We've got collection and seating area to the south, study room and meeting room on the north side, looking out into the landscape. Upstairs, we've got more collection space, program room and maker space facing the streets. And this program room is glazed to allow for views through the room to the existing building from the exterior. So here, you can see that both entry points of the buildings flank that landscape pathway. Both doorways are undercover, and the columns are of similar size and style to set up that companionship relationship there. The glazing pattern, again for Option Two, reflects the pattern of the old Almer, of your heritage windows here. You've got two long panes and an overarching light above. Sunshades on the south and the west sides provide some shade and filtering of light and views. And here you can see the overall arching pattern of the facade is similar to that of the existing building. And for this option, we chose a brick color that is warm and sandy and blends with that heritage brick. It's different, but it's intended to be harmonious and together without competing for attention. Option Three is the library across the street. And this is the one where we wanted to activate the corner and the street front of that side of John Street South. And to do that, we're turning to the retail character of Talbot Street. In particular, we're looking at the variation in facade heights and the rhythm of the windows and the bands of the storefronts here. So this building sits in the western portion of the parking lot, and the facade here, the John Street frontage is divided into thirds. The first, the north portion, it steps back from the streets, and the remaining facade steps forward to the sidewalk and then slightly back with a planting strip directly opposite the park. So, the main entrance forecourt here includes some low planting and some benches and directly aligns with the columns and the width of Old Town Hall, setting up a conversation between these two buildings that you can feel when you're walking along the street here. Inside, community spaces are focused on the north portion, and the southern two-thirds of the building is an overheight space, and the central collection and seating areas take advantage of light from upper windows over the lobby and circulation desk areas. So, here we can see the design of the new library pulling out those elements from the retail storefronts on Talbot Street, including the cornice line flare here, this punched window shape, the central banding and the variation in brick patterns evoke a character and scale of the retail streetscape. The banding aligns with the canopy and wraps around the west and the south sides of the building. So, the brick we've chosen to explore for this option is a deep, earthy shade with some purple undertones that's complementary to the warm blonde heritage brick of Old Town Hall. So, and as I know you're aware, we provided some estimates for each of these options. And to do this, we use a database of market prices and experience to arrive at a number. And this includes escalation allowances for time, making assumptions about when the project might be built. So Option One has a premium for a couple of reasons, and that's there's more area here, we've got some additional flex space for use by the theater. That glazed bridge is to be an absolute jewel, but it has some building code challenges. And it does trigger some renovation to the existing building, so including upgrades, say, of the electrical and ventilation systems and some sprinklers for fire safety. The other two options are less complex, because they're separate buildings. Option Two is pretty compact, and Option Three is very straightforward. And again, these are three options that have been provided to assist council in choosing a direction for this expansion project, and they just represent ideas for what the new building could be and show different ways of approaching the project based on those specific locations and relationships with Old Town Hall. So, I thank you for your attention, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I will turn the questions over to council. Council, do you have any questions? Council, gentlemen, you can deal with some sort of...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first question I have is how would JPM define a Class D estimate? And in past projects, how close have Class D estimates been to finalized build costs?
So, for the Class D estimate, we use a database, and we measure that against some experience with similar projects. We come up with a square footage cost, and then apply that to the area. This is very high-level and very general point. As the design moves forward, it would get more specific. Recently, we've had some office buildings that came in under our estimates. We've had others that have come in quite close, others that are slightly higher for unrelated reasons. A renovation project is always a bit of a risk, but we do try to manage that through the design process.
One final question. Since the purpose of this project is to make sure we're providing sufficient space and improving functionality of the library operations, another question I have is whether library staff were consulted while the service areas and layout was developed?
So, for these concept designs, unfortunately, library staff was not consulted at this point. We referred to the design guidelines for the library, that administration, and they provide very specific requirements for a library based on the community size, dictating size of circulation desk and program rooms and the maker space and the public computers and all of those considerations. So it's a very straightforward program for us to look at. We are making some kind of common sense decisions in terms of where to place these spaces, but in further refinement of the design, we would expect additional consultation with them to make sure that the space is going to work for them.
Any other questions? Comments? If you have any further...
Thank you. Option Number One utilizes the existing library for approximately 3,000 square feet to get up to its required 10,000 square foot standard. With the additional costs that's involved in Option Number One, you stated that there would be some upgrades to the existing Town Hall. Are they reflective on the list of items that we're already aware of that need to be completed? And secondly, does the heritage designation of Old Town Hall have any detrimental effect on the implementation of this addition? Is it going to detract from the heritage concept?
So, for your first question, those elements to be upgraded for in Old Town Hall with this addition that's directly attached, yes, we did include those in our estimates. And in fact, the biggest item is that glazing for that corridor above, and that's just a building code thing, we need to protect that area, that fire-rated glass is quite expensive. Now, in the future, as this design gets refined, if this is the option chosen, that area can be reduced, and we can have other conversations about how to meet those code requirements. In terms of the heritage aspects, we have a lot of experience building onto additions for heritage buildings, and this one touches the existing building pretty lightly. The biggest interventions would be sprinklers, some updates to electrical and ventilation system, and the structural connections for that bridge hanging out over Cooper's Alley. So, coming into the building through the floor and at the roof line here. So those will be the most invasive for the heritage building, but they should not detract from the overall character of the building at all. And it's my understanding that the main heritage elements of this building are these windows, and of course, the theater space with the ceiling.
Any other questions, council? Councilor Chapman?
You just mentioned the ceiling. So, we're putting water sprinklers. How about that back to ceiling?
So, sprinkler lines in the second story and the theater space?
Yeah.
Yep, so, a lot of coverage can be done at the perimeters along the wall. Some may need to go up in order to get the right coverage, but we can, you know, always look at options for concealed, for more low-profile systems that won't just touch that ceiling so much.
I have a question concerning, I guess I'm also a colleague concerning dealing with the needs of the staff of the county for the library, and also dealing with, I guess, tweaks to the design. Once we make a design, there will be consultation with library staff, and there'll also be opportunities for council to provide input into tweaks to the design or changes to the design to make it more appropriate to some of the challenges that we have. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? I'm going to, first of all, first of all, I think we'll do a resolution to accept the report.
The presentation from JPM Architecture Incorporated regarding the Old Town Hall and Almer Library Expansion, we received some permission.
Logan Secretary. Councilor De Rosia, and Councilor Olesch. All those in favor? Next, Karen. Next item is correspondence related to the resolution, particularly correspondence or the resolution correspondence.
But the correspondence related to the Old Town Hall and Almer Library Expansion, we received some permission.
Logan Secretary. Councilor De Rosia, and Councilor Barber. All those in favor? Next, Karen. And next, we're going to have a group report from the C E O concerning, I guess, the next steps and where council should go in terms of action items on these resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief with this report, because council already dedicated significant time to this over the last year. We currently have three conceptual designs before council, although 250,000 has been allocated in this project, only about one fifth of that amount has been spent to date. Should council choose to proceed to the detailed engineering stage for preferred design, staff will aid to complete that work before the end of this term. Though it's important to acknowledge that it's neither feasible nor appropriate for this term to issue or award an RFP, as doing so would bind the incoming council. But certainly, you'll get this as far as council wants this term. This matter has been brought forward in earnest by the county around the midway point of this term. I don't wish to critique the county's efforts in advancing this issue, as I believe doing so could come across as potentially adversarial. That said, I believe any decision made tonight by Almer council should be respected at the county level. If council chooses to move forward with a proposal that represents a significant capital investment, I sincerely hope that the county not only wants to be viewed as our partner in the project, but also is becomes one of its greatest champions. I remain optimistic the county will embrace the direction that Almer council takes, and I want to leave the door open for that positive and productive dialogue with the county. One challenge we may face is establishing a reasonable and achievable timeline for any capital work. Should council move forward with a major project, it would be much more manageable from a financial perspective if work construction were to take place during the second path of the next term of council. Certainly, the staff have a lot of experience in delivering large capital projects and avoiding large increases to property taxes, so council will establish their vision and staff will work towards an even reality with affordability for community demand. Certainly, Elgin County understands the complexity and timelines involved in large-scale capital projects. They've done large capital projects such as Terrace Lodge that took multiple years, so they understand that this isn't something that will come about immediately, but so we don't anticipate concerns in that regard. The county is also aware of the municipal election cycle and would understand that the library represents a significant decision that will extend beyond this council's mandate. The JPM options are before you tonight, and beyond those, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the leadership that council has shown since this issue was brought forward last year. From a staff perspective, council has demonstrated tremendous commitment to navigating what has been a historically contentious topic with its sincere effort to find a resolution that benefits the entire community. The leadership has not gone on the list, and I certainly hope staff can take it as an example when we jump into some of these hard issues and try to solve them for this community, because that's what we really want to do the best that we can for the town of Almer. Staff, we're fully prepared to support and implement whatever council's vision is. That could include advancing fundraising efforts, developing the financial plans, many lead-up impacts, and collaborating with Elgin County on this project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, council.
Thank you. So the town is trying to make a decision, council, so if we have any questions, comments, I'd welcome a resolution to put on the table.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Richard. I have prepared a draft resolution for council's consideration. Hold on, could you circulate and read that out, please?
Resolution reads, that report C E O, forty-three dash twenty-five, respecting the library redevelopment project conceptual design, we received your information, and that council approved, looking proceeding of Option One is outlined by JPM, and that council approved, the council's approval be forwarded to Elgin County Council for information, and let staff prepare a report outlining the process timelines for the detailed design of Option One before proceeding with further engagement of JPM on this component of the project.
Thank you. We have a moving resolution, we have a second group, Councilor Olesch. Discussion, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, before I jump into the discussion of this motion, there is something to clarify on the record, and that is, talk that is brought up by one of our delegates was regarding affordability for this community. And that was a big concern that some of the other delegates have brought forward. One of the things that was mentioned in one of the delegations was the town's current reserve status, which I believe was stated around twelve million. I think it's important for the public to be aware of how that twelve million is distributed within our reserve system. So I've provided a copy of our reserve balance on my social media, this graph is taken directly from a public document that was prepared for us by our treasurer, and it outlines our reserve status from 2019 within projected to 2030. And why is it a big concern for showing residents here specifically with affordability? Because yes, you may have twelve million now, but if you look at that graph, which is clearly a very clear depiction of how it's set up, is there's different types of reserves that we have in municipality. The first one, we have the obligated reserve, which are gray, and those are funds that must be satisfied for our purpose because legislative or contractual requirements, which means the municipality has no direction for how it will do. We're structured, which are the regular circles, our funded... Restorative, which are the regular circles, are funds that council has designated for specific purposes by by law, the regulations, meaning they're already restricted and developed. And reserves that are black, these are the general purpose reserves that are not legally or formally restricted and they act as a financial buffer for unexpected policies. When you look at that graph, that is what reflects the concern of affordability amongst constituents, particularly among young constituents who are going to be having to split the bill of this for years to come. You look at that graph, which is directly from a council document, you see those reserves, especially the ones that are just open, which are those are the ones that we could use for a project such as this. They go down to, it looks like under one million by twenty twenty-seven. If you also look at that graph, you'll see capital projects that are unfunded for required by the tax of like continually rise to the point where they are above reserves. And that is where constituents are concerned about the affordability of this project and the decisions that this council is making. So with that clarification on the record, I would also like to say that opinions in our community are clearly divided. Staff's own report acknowledges that this issue will be a major target during next election. This does not the clear mandate that some are referring to. Let's be honest here. We have five counselors who are applying and a man who was elected on a promise that he would not revisit the library issue. We cannot in good faith say that this council represents what the public truly wants. Our personal opinions and those of advocacy groups are not the same as the will of this community. Let's allow the community a real chance to have a final say. For that reason, my preference is not to vote on any of these options, but to defer this matter to the next term of council. Give the residents a real meaningful opportunity to have their vote about what they want for our community's future. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Uh thank you. Members of the council, no matter how they were elected, whether they were claimed or went through the electoral process, periodically have to make tough decisions and this is, this is obviously one of the tough decisions. The library issue has been kicked around for almost twenty years. Uh do we, don't we, can we, will we? And with all due respect, uh I I think the time has come to actually move forward and do something. The the funding for the for the library will come from basically three sources. It's been already stated that a segment of the community is more than willing to put their shoulder to the wheel and make donations of a significant amount. That's item number one. Item number two is if we have a show ready project, uh ready to go, uh it puts us in much better speed to to approach other levels of government for grants. And we need the support of donations, we need the support of grants in order to make this viable. Yes, there is a budget concern that has to be taken into account. And that would be done in due course. It's already been mentioned by Andy that nothing will affect, nothing library wise will affect the twenty twenty-six budget. That is there in grant form for public overview at the present time. This is looking beyond today or tomorrow. This is looking toward the future, no matter which way we go. And it's my belief that I think now is the time that we have to make a decision, move forward, and actually make something happen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Oslasch?
Uh the library debate has been rolling in one for twenty years. It's time to settle it for one summer in our car and our and for I agree all of the candidates and it's quite varied types of opinions. I'm in favor of number one, that will benefit the dealer in many ways. Simple use of heaven above the greater core. The business of all move upon the core. Now, the downtown, uh the library, uh the downtown temple is a full shot. We do, one, we do, uh we want to do the same thing for Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Chapman?
We want to hear these things up. It wasn't the mayor who brought this project forward, it was the county. So let's just make that fair, that it was not the mayor who gave rise to the time to drive that thing to us after one year of redoing their lease. And they told us if we don't have a solution by the end of the lease, that we, it will not be good. So let's make that part clear. Secondly, you have a legacy. And you're not looking at this as a legacy. My decisions are not based on me, they're based on many factors. I look at the children that walk from the school, I've been here when they were at the library, you're talking about thirty year old flagy olds who come to the library for the first time. That's not what happened and it goes to the the complex, it just will not happen. The the school board does not have funding and it will end. The economic stability, it's like our, it's just the counselor, um, Osha has just said, the economic value of having the library here is huge. I know that some of you think that things are moving to the west of town. However, not all of it is, we still have all of this and we still have the east side of town. So you think about the core and then not being able to get to the complex, we're not the ones that live on the east side. And yes, we are the fell things to the west, but if you look at reality, people that can afford a home that's being built in the west side also can afford a car. And the library is is not just for those who have money. We had a speaker here tonight who spoke about how when he came to this country, he had that money and drove a vehicle until he was sixteen. That still happens. What if that doesn't go wrong? You don't have transportation, I was one of those, I'm going for the flight. So when we take something from an accessibility point view, the complex is not there. I don't know how many letters I read saying that we we allow their children to walk along the highway to get there. But if they don't have transportation or parents don't have time because they work two or three jobs and they still want their children to go to the library, how are they going to get there? If you have all programs in the world, but you're people that you want to be part of those programs saying get to them, what's the point? Um it is, it's hard to to think to the future. Not that, not okay, we've been losing for twenty-five years. If you look at reality, if we lose the complex, we are losing so much. We have a facility that raises forty thousand over here in rental costs. So let's take that off the hundred and eighty thousand that the library would be paying to be there. Also, we have tournaments that that use both the hall and the ice paths. They're not going to come because they don't have the room. What about the summer hockey program that uses the ice and the the facility? They're not going to come because they need those spaces. So are you going to take away one for another? It doesn't make sense. Yes, it's going to cost you a lot of money to build in the library. But in the end, you will have so much more and you can still have the complex and add more to it. I'd love to have a pool there eventually when this library is taken care of, that would be, that would be feasible. But in the meantime, if you choose to place the library at the complex and not build something here, you're taking away access to many, many people. And to me, a community is about treating everyone equally. And to me, taking that access away is not taking that into consideration. One of the letters that we received was from an elderly woman who uses the scooter. She's maybe six years old and she comes here on a regular basis. Can you imagine her on her scooter? She lives on the the southeast end of town. You expect her to go from there to the complex? She doesn't have a car. So every time she wants to go there, she has to find someone to take her. Where should it sound? She can come to the library on her own. We have twelve year old children sending in letters asking us to keep the library here so they can walk here on their own. I just want you to think about all of that. When we're making decisions, the decision isn't just about the financial of moving to the complex because in reality, when you do the math, Elmer is no fool ahead putting it at the complex than we are right now. So really, you'll pick those numbers, folks, because we will actually be losing money by moving in to the wrong place. Well, you say you want to reduce the debt at the complex, well, you might be doing that, but you will be creating a deficit in another area. So really think, and I hope that you all think about that when you're making your decision tonight. Yes, it's a big project and you know what? Sometimes you do that, when you buy a house, it's a big decision and you're going to have to tighten your curtains strings and all that stuff when you buy a house. But fifteen, sixteen years down the road, your house is paid for and you have somebody that's amazing. That is what this is about, it's about looking to our future. It's not about meal and dining and yes, I realize that people are struggling. But I also realize that if you don't look to the future, you lose. You lose greatly. For every dollar spent at a library, six dollars is returned in the education and well-being of the children that are vacuuming. So what I think is you are a small group of people. I'm not saying you're the only ones that use a library, but when you take this away, you take it away from them as well. And and then you could be delivering it to a group that can afford these things. You said you didn't have internet. Well, there's still people who don't have internet. You said you don't have a car, there's still people who don't have a car. And you know what, there's people who don't have cell phones, they can't afford them. You also mentioned that the library was a place where you could connect, you talked about Donna Lewis on, who became your mentor. If you didn't go to the library, you wouldn't have met Donna and maybe shared direction of life would not have been the same. It's a community place.
And I was horrible, so when was it, Councilor De Rosia?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um first of all, I want to thank my colleagues here today for contributing to this debate because I feel it gave the public a really good this perspective of the representation that we have in what this private is our, so thank you very much, my colleagues. Um a couple of points that were mentioned that I would like to touch on, perhaps I'll start with Councilor Chapman. Regarding the treating everyone equally, I think that's a really important consideration to have, especially when we're talking about prioritizing a location. Because when you're prioritizing a location to the downtown town, let's say, you're not really treating everyone equally because the people that live on the west end, the people that live on the south end, the people that live on the north end, the people that live on the east end, they're all going to have the same distance of a walk and the people that live central are going to have it easier, I understand that. But when you move it to a different location, there's other people different than a bracket that are going to have the same distance that is going to be easier for that to be, so it's it's it's, to me, it's a wash. For some people, it's going to be easier, for some people, it's not, no matter where you live. As far as the accessibility and walking, I agree with Mr. Preza. Um I'm a parent, I have a child, wouldn't matter if the library was across the street. Personally, I wouldn't allow my child to walk there alone, I would I would ensure to get there or I would walk with them, drive them, get someone else to take them. Um I I think we live in a much different world than we did eight, ten, fifteen years ago. And walking anywhere at the same age, as a parent, I wouldn't allow my child to do that, so. The other thing that Councilor Chapman touched on was there's some parents that can't do that, they can't drive their children. They can't be with them because they're working two to three jobs. Why are they working two to three jobs? Because of our economy, our our cost of living. And you make a decision like this that's going to impact someone's bottom line, they probably aren't going to get a fourth job because our cost of living is out of control here in our in our, I'm sure frankly. And the other thing, again, is it's being disconnected from the realities of our financial state. It doesn't take fifteen, sixteen years to pay off a house, as I have, and the average house price is six hundred thousand dollars. Twenty percent or ten percent if you're lucky for a down payment, do the math. And how much cost of living is and what the average uh wage is? People my age are not paying off their house in fifteen to sixteen years, they're lucky if they're buying a house at thirty-five and they're paying it off by retirement. Facts, you want to fact check it, go ahead and look it up. That's basic economy standards and facts. So I I really appreciate the comments from my colleagues, but I think it really does highlight how disconnected they are from the average citizenry happening in our community. And another really great point that is, um, Deputy Mayor Barber brought up was grants. This this municipality had a delegation at AMO with the Ministry of Culture and Tourism, actually, for a certain parliamentary system, I'm saying they lived at all. Specifically, she requests funding, Councilor Chapman was there, Mayor Cookett was there, CEO Roxelle was there. Do you know what the parliamentary system told us? The province isn't prioritizing this ministry. They prioritize the infrastructure, house care, or house housing, healthcare and education. We've got nothing. So I'm sorry, but it's unlikely. The other person that was at that delegation was Laura Natalie Pierre, who is the Parliamentary Assistant for Sports and Recreation, and you know what she suggested? A common theme across the province is amalgamating services into recreational facilities. If you think that. What does that tell us? No funding, provisional funding for the Ministry of Culture and Tourism, possible funding for the Ministry of Sports and Recreation. So I admire the enthusiasm from my colleagues here, their optimism, but the progress was very clear. And the county has been very clear as well as where they stand with supporting this, the fundraising efforts. So if this is the direction that this council is going to take, I fully respect that. But I'm also expecting the people there in this audience who are promoting this project to call me up and put your money where your mouth is because I'm telling you right now, you will.
Do you know who else, um? If you're going to chair orders, you've, Deputy Mayor Barber, for a moment, because anytime a chair makes a comment, it's sort of, you shouldn't be the chair, so the cases are kind of ruling. I'm not going to add a lot to the arguments that are made about where the library should be. I want to make a couple of arguments about what kind of town, uh, the elder we should want, the kind of downtown we should want. There are a number of things that are for sure and, uh, one of the things that are for sure is that if we don't provide ten thousand square feet through the county library downtown, it will go somewhere else. It may not go in the complex. It may it would be something that offers the county ten thousand square feet. And that would be a crying shame for the downtown development. I know that the other people have made this point, but it is a very number one significant point. And in fact, it won't be here if we don't build it. And secondly, we can't afford this. We really can't afford it. We haven't looked at the numbers yet. We haven't given uh, the treasurer or staff the chance to kind of look at uh, how they can put numbers together to help finance this. But we can finance it. We can finance the A Park, which is millions of dollars. We finance the tower, which is millions of dollars. We finance the lagoons, uh, which are millions of dollars and the opposite. Each one of those is a library. It's time that we financed a library here. The comments are made about the fact that I ran out of the bases that uh, I wasn't gonna bring the library out and I really meant that because I didn't want to be associated with something that didn't work the last time. And but I got pushed into it by by the county and perhaps I waited too long for I brought forth the resolution to council. Perhaps, but, uh, you know, part of that was because I had promised that I would bring up the library and all of you know that the library is in my heart as to where it should be. I still think there is a fundamental misunderstanding of what libraries are. And a few of you have pointed that out or think it says that libraries aren't just books. It's a place where people can go and have a third place. And I was brought up by Cynthia in the comments, I think, uh, but I think it's just.
Yeah, sociologists, you know, with that.
Anyway, uh, the the social scientists have pointed out that third place libraries are the major place, the third place. It's a place where you can gamble as well as yeah. But you know, there's a bunch of things you can do to relax, a bunch of things that you can interact with people, a bunch of things to deal with a better community living. So the library needs to be a place where that can happen. It can happen very well outside of this area. Now, we talked about it as being an emotional issue. Yeah, it's kind of an emotional issue, but that's just issue, but down very deep, it's about money. And that's a pity. There really is a pity that it's just about money. You can make all kinds of cases about the fact that you know, taxes are too high or your dentist appointment is too much money or your doctor, not your doctor, but everything is gonna but it's about money to be in a place you and it's not the right way to look at it. It's about people that you don't look at. I mean, uh, I have a lot of other things that I sure wrote down. Somebody told me if I don't write it down, I don't do a good speech, but I I think I'm I think I've done. I think it's time for council to make a decision. And we have resolution of table and I think so. So I can't call the question because I'm not chairing. Can I take chair over?
Uh, sure.
This time. I think it does go under the call question.
Have a recorded vote.
We have a recorded vote. And read the resolution.
Sure. These are resolution reads. The report, C A O thirty forty-three twenty-five respecting the Elmer redevelopment, Elmer Library Redevelopment Project conceptual designs. They received your information. And that council approved proceeding with option one is outlined by J D M. And that council approval be forwarded to Elvin County for information. And that staff prepare a further report outlining the process and timelines for the detailed design of option one before proceeding with further engagement of J W N upon the supplement of the project. And reported votes, uh, Councilor Barbara. Yes. Councilor Chapman.
Yes.
Councilor Disraeli.
No.
Councilor Oslav.
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Barbara.
Yes.
Mayor Cookett.
Yes.
And the motion is carried six to one.
People, I can't hear me. You guys are not the best from this town, you understand me? No one's gonna be able to put food on the table. No one's gonna be able to get gas in their car to go to work. They're all full of shit. Every single one of you.
Goodbye.
Fuck you.
Motion is carried five.
Next, I know is a, um, was helping give me a complex, Lori, uh, feeling like you know, branch there is even fuller than what you're talking about. Five thousand dollars, everybody mentioned. Um, okay. Yeah. Can we do this break? We have a break. For, uh, maybe three minutes. Uh, yeah.
The, uh, the council of the town of Elmer approved the allocation of those ten thousand dollars, five thousand for municipal partner. For the purpose of obtaining a design months of costing analysis, financial planning for the potential relocation of the Elmer library because the case is.
Do we have a second here? Does the board think I don't get those? Any discussion or notes? How much do we have in department? There are three numbers you already mentioned, you have the E E C C. We don't worry. Ten thousand dollars, we don't give enough to get it after. Deal with.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Uh, the question to the E E C C, uh, meaning that ten thousand may not be enough to cover the cost of hoping, you know, what it will be feasible to move the library over to the complex. So wondering if I can make a request to defer this to give staff an opportunity to gather a more detailed report on what the actual cost would be before we make a decision on spending another five thousand dollars.
Motion to defer. We have a second here. Deputy Mayor Barbara, motion to defer. I'll have to say a prosecution where you must show your own soul in that person. Any comments to address on motion to defer?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Motion to defer is on the table or, you know, the case precedes over in the motion. So any discussion on the motion to defer is staff or for. Yes, Councilor DeWolfe.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. The, can I see clarification as to why I would defer this? Um, what is the staff report to, you know, sorry?
Just based on my understanding of what the staff thought, I feel that based on some of the comments they made, it costs more than ten thousand dollars. Um, I believe it was a total of some uh, I think it was one fourteen was there. Um, so I'd just like to see what I didn't feel like there was no information. I'd like to see is a more accurate cost on what is better, what it costs to be the mover to library or to the E E C C. So I'm asking for a more detailed report on what that could look like before proposing.
Councilor DeWolfe.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm so confused because us approving this five thousand, four then a ten thousand dollar cost to E E C that is to give that cost analysis. So deferring, we're not, you're asking our staff to do a cost analysis. Meanwhile, the county was giving you the cost analysis. I don't know why you're passing me it. I feel like, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, and then I'm so confused here.
Sure you, uh, so the town, uh, as the administrator of the E E C C was on a previous one. Um, a previous one that was done in twenty fourteen initially and updated potentially in twenty fifteen. Costs, uh, around, I think, over six and a half thousand dollars. The staff member with that firm no longer works there. So this would give an opportunity to actually reach out to the firm, determine what the true cost is and rather than delay it when it go, if we prove it now and it comes out that it's fifteen thousand dollars, we're delaying the E E C C board regardless because then I have to report. They meet less frequently with our council base.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Don't be, but I'm sorry. I'm so confused because the the county was going to oversee this.
No, they don't.
They're they're getting staff to do it.
They they, the county is not the administrator of the E E C C. The E E C C administration has always, um, they they produced the county was consulted in the twenty fourteen and twenty seventeen once.
Okay, so when the E E, sorry, yes. So when the E E C C, uh, requested that there be a further cost analysis down, that was sort of have to town staff regardless.
The the county staff would would administer it. Otherwise, you have the same party that you potentially would be entering the lease with present. If you like buying a a used car from somebody and taking their word on price.
Do you mean a approval with our municipal partner? If I left that at the board, we could do this? Or or we just still have to make this call? I feel this is weird.
For for council, if if this is council and having a a put a decision on what the cost and timeline for that would be. Um, and certainly, once this council comes to this council, we would send it after this council, let me say, we've said we don't need another party. Uh, otherwise, the P E C C board likely will need for it'll tell November or December. So we're just delaying everything.
The the partner should be okay. Does there need to be a conversation for I'm working here for terms of reference? Is there gonna be a conversation with the partner before we initiate the the lawsuit?
This 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 information would be gathered for for council's information on on it. Uh, so we would, the we were the 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 analysis of the cost was presented solely by Elvin County. There was no research on that or analysis on it. So we would just be checking to confirm the cost, to make sure that it's an actual cost and hearing that information back to council.
So, do you have any questions on the town? All right, we have a motion to defer on the motion to defer on the form. All those in favor? Those. That is one question, kind of voted in favor, so, um, it is very oh, maybe a terrible. Uh, so can you take a very precise right now? We're gonna play it there.
Thank you.
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 Consent agenda, resolutions.
That's at the October fifteenth, twenty twenty five consent agenda, you receive your information. And that the included recommendations from the staff reports be adopted. And that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on October first, twenty twenty five.
Well, we're checking. Doctor Chapman, Councilor De Rosy. Anything you want to take out of that and just to council De Rosy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh six point one point one. Uh the length of line of correspondence is not only in our or on our, I mean, it's still word, but it's also part for the boundary adjustment proposal. For this reason, I'm hoping I can ask uh our staff if they can take part in that consultation and bring back report to council.
Sure, I'll get that. Sure you uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, certainly, if if we don't have a master report on it when taking the form of a memo, uh.
Okay, okay, good. Anything else? See, none, all those in favor? The management carry little gift, seven, eight point one. Uh finance committee resolution on the Almer approval, resolution. There is not a resolution recommended or stress the council in such a direction?
Yeah, okay, uh I can just give a a quick, uh so briefly, the revolution from the resolution from the finance committee is problematic. Uh first staff have endorsed. Um anyone who's on the pool knows that i- if you have significant work to undertake for next season, you got to book within the next month or two. So staff are not opposed to closing the pool next year if that's council's desire. However, waiting till January or February to see if the problems and that's a new type of grant. Will in staff's opinion make it impossible for staff to schedule the work for March and Aprils of twenty twenty six to make sure that the pool opens? So the delay, just for the further staff report, does in staff's opinion have the effect of closing the pool for twenty twenty six? So uh staff don't believe that the finance committee was aware that this delay would effectively close the pool. So we're just seeking clarification. Does council want that direction with the uh best plan for um construction in the late summer fall? And allow for us to uh look at any new grants that might be announced? Or or do you want us to continue to try to work uh towards that opening in next year?
Thank you, uh, how's your chat on the birthday and how's your De Rosy?
To you, yes, so, um. Uh to find for a grant that might be a grant coming down the hole in January? And when would be announced? Whether we accept, got accepted for that grant?
Uh through, so the the last recreation grant. Um I I forget what the report was, whether it was announced in January or February? And it was announced on May thirtieth, but we had to follow up quite a few uh both mirrors. Because that was for the ECC, both work near care and and the our mayor advocated with the ministry to get an update. So that took some some too long to get to May thirtieth to announce.
And I understand that you cannot start the wording. In order to get the grant, however, you have everything in place to start it, is that correct?
Sure you, yes, but if you're going to, so in order to be eligible for a provincial grant, we'll have to do uh. Uh a full procurement process rather than work with the vendor that we believe has quoted accurately on this. We could likely lock in the pricing for us now. And that full procurement process, when we go out to market and say that we have an absolute construction timeline of between this month and this month. You you will pay a premium within that one. So we aren't likely, we're not likely to get better pricing through a procurement than we are to coming forward with a report to council. Suggesting a single source of sole source to get the project.
Yes, yes, okay, okay. So my concern is during COVID, our spending programs were canceled. And because of that, we are short our lifeguards. And there was a couple of years there where instead of getting some programs. So if we close the pool for a year, that again means that our lifeguards are delayed and we're already short lifeguards. So I have concern about closing the pool for a year. I realize that it's a significant amount of money and that if we could get a grant, it would be great. But when you're looking at all of these people to support it. The people that you're asked to support it are people who also support some programs. So are we looking to lessen our number of lifeguards? Are we looking to lessen our um lessons for our children? I I just. I understand wanting to grant. But I don't want to close the pool.
Council, you're located there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Part one, just clarification as I've drawn up in that motion, so just to be clear with for Council Chairman, um. What I'm seeking from those partners was not uh financial support. It's uh, it's like it's endorsement, so it's support for the application that we're going to write. Because all of those organizations are my stakeholders and and invited from that community pool. So having those letters of yours that was strength of the application, um. The second part is, you know, this this application or this right, this notice of motion was brought to capital based on conversations that was having with the ministry of sport recreation. So um yes, nothing in life is is for sure. And I understand that there is a risk. And to be honest, I'm I'm good at like whatever whatever direction this council takes, I respect. Um and I don't regret them. I just wanted to ensure that council was aware of the authenticity. Um I think we have a really strong application for funding for that funding stream. I think the joint submission, perhaps a pursues a delegation with the ministry. Um it would significantly reduce the tax or the financial burden from the taxpayer. So like I said, at the end of the day, whatever this council chooses to do, I fully support and uh with all that, thank you.
So what's uh looking for is a decision from council here. Uh um what's your wish to me take the chance and uh wait or can we spend the money? To keep growing? Yeah, spend the money. You just want to make a resolution? If we're kind of, you need a resolution that says that till we go ahead with uh. Uh doing the repairs on the pool, I think, is what the resolution, the motion would be that we go ahead and do that. Um go ahead and say it. How's your chat? So um have you got a word to leave? Start that.
Over with uh the council received information, chief administrator officer report. Uh now regarding uh the finance committee resolution on the Almer pool. And then Almer provided direction staff to receive um. Uh she take with with the repairs, she take with to proceed with the repairs uh for the twenty twenty six season. Um um question, when would, when would we get a permit to do the repair?
Uh certainly, I was hopeful that Suzie would probably bring forth uh. Report in uh November, December awarding the work um to to provide that they're currently working with. And and if they're locked down on the timeline, end up uh full cost to the project.
Anyone else? Alright, be a resolution. That says let's go ahead and. We'll we'll be during the group. No other comments?
So I'm just waiting for like, like you're concerned of where he is. Should we worry about Cal's regard, like is like should we wait for him or should we find out where he is? So, oh, oh, okay, so.
Uh no, good, he's not coming back. Uh didn't remember that.
Uh thank you, I'm I'm just curious as to uh if we have to go ahead with this by yourself. How are we gonna pay for it?
Uh, well, good, good question for uh. Uh but it's already included, either way, um the full cost is already included in the twenty twenty six budget. Uh that that's been considered, so it's a capital project that's built into the budget, whether or not we get grant funded or not. Uh if we did not grant funded, it would up the reserve for the twenty twenty seven budget essentially.
So can we still, by then, for the grant, because though we're moving forward? Like at what stage do the grant people say that's enough?
When we start, when we start preparing?
When we start, oh?
When we start preparing.
Okay, so we we can keep moving forward and still apply for the grant? And if the grant doesn't come in, then we continue with it on our own?
It would be a fundamentally different procurement process though. Because in order to be accessible for the grant, we have to issue a tender for the project. And the tender would have those dates, whereas we're we're thinking that will actually have better um pricing. We work with the vendor who's giving us the hold offense.
So all of this will come back before council again? Where did we decide to go then? We still have a decision to make as to whether we really to. Oh, okay. Really? Yes. Okay, um I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the resolution? Opposed? And is carried? Okay, thank you, um. Role of conference, seven point two, resolution.
Uh the report C A R forty two dash twenty five respects in the twenty twenty six program conference, we receive your information.
Movement Secretary, Councilor De Rosy, and Movement Secretary, Deputy Mayor Barber. Any discussion? Councilor De Rosy, you.
And we, I'd like to attend the conference, I I don't need uh for prior accommodations, thank you.
Anyone else? See, none, all of the fair of the resolution and this period, January seven point three. The head rail project award, um resolution.
That the council would sound Almer approved the immediate allocation up to thirty thousand dollars, fifteen thousand per municipal partner. For the handrail project is the twenty twenty sixteen ECC capital budget item to allow for extended expedited procurement.
Well, we're checking. Councilor De Rosy, Councilor uh Deputy Mayor Barber. We have a. Report.
Uh through you, uh so this is an open the ECC uh meeting. Uh the summarize the board warrant us to get pre-approval for this project within the twenty twenty six budget. So the staff could start now looking for options and they get it installed, listens to us.
Questions, Congress? Uh the Council Chairman.
Uh to your name, just because it wasn't happening, um just so that I understand. They have not deemed the stainless steel. And this thirty thousand is for whatever other. Material they've chosen and we are, we are remaining to up to the fifteen thousand? Uh is that correct? And if it goes over that, then then it's not, we're not approving it?
Uh certainly, if it goes uh over, that will be back before the the ECC board. I mean, there'll be another request, but uh this kind of reflects their desire to see us expedited.
Anyone else? See, none, all those cater. Carry. Your business of matters of urgency, we have a motion, Councilor De Rosy, um this motion.
Whereas to remember that crosswalks serve as a visible and meaningful way to recognize and celebrate important community events, cultural heritage, local history and causes of significance. Whereas several municipalities across Ontario have implemented. commemorative crosswalks as inclusive engagement public art initiatives. And whereas the formal policy would provide clear criteria, application processes, design standards and maintenance responsibilities. Uh for such installations. Therefore, be a result that council directs staff to develop a commemorative commemorative crosswalk policy that outlines the purpose and guiding principles of commemorative crosswalks. Eligibility criteria for individuals, organizations and events to be recommended. Applications and approval processes, including public consultation where applicable. Design, safety, accessibility, technical standards and importance for transportation regulations. Roles and responsibilities for installation, funding and ongoing maintenance. Uh and a mechanism for review and potential renewal, relocation or removal of crosswalks.
No rejecter? Uh the move of the Councilor De Rosy detective, if council goes watch. Uh comment, questions? Councilor De Rosy, first.
Thank you, Chair. Uh over this term, I've had a overwhelming number of residents approach me about commemorative crosswalks. From individuals to community organizations, all expressing interest on how they can bring this initiative to an almer and incorporated way. Deputy Mayor Barber reached out earlier to try about the possibility of providing crosswalk. E E S S, Deputy Secretary School has inquired about how they can incorporate one here at your high school. Legion, as Councilor Oz last mentioned, is already discussions about a potential veterans crosswalk. And members of our district have also spoke to me about recognizing every child matters campaign. These conversations tell me that there's a genuine and growing community interest in creating spaces that reflect our values, our history and our identity. Municipalities across Ontario have already implemented policies for commemorative crosswalks. And these policies ensure that insulation runs safely, equitably and in alignment with local standards. Bringing forward policy now is a proactive step and it gives residents of organizations a clear framework outlining eligibility. Design, approval process and maintenance responsibilities. So that those who wish to initiate these projects have the tools to do so collaboratively with their municipalities. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Uh thank you, do we know if there are any uh restrictions or limitations as to the design of the crosswalk? M T O perspective, uh are there uh limitations as to what you can do? Does anybody know?
So, sir, we hear.
Oh, good question, man.
Danny, you see it there, that's right, man.
I know the bright lights. Uh there definitely is limitations on on the crosswalk making standards, it would have to follow highway traffic regulations. That being said, um some of the uh, for instance, Legion has already put out um different templates that follow the highway traffic act regulations. So that's something that this policy would have to look at and making sure that um what is being proposed uh would follow all the regulations. And also look at the specific locations that would be uh requested to see if they would be applicable for for what we see. Because obviously, if you have supply traffic area is in town and uh. The M T O for county roads uh would have to be looked at uh closely if that's the locations that are being questioned.
Follow if I may? Follow the man.
Uh to Terry, uh we have a couple of courtesy crosswalks. Uh is there any motivation to upgrade those?
Through your worship, uh yes, there was a previous report, I believe, two years ago that that dealt with or that uh spoke to the courtesy crossings. Um they are unfortunately uh within the zone of being too close to the existing traffic signals there. So again, we could look at it again once this policy is in place um to see if anything has changed. But uh there was a study done on those um. The courtesy crosswalks and they were too close to the existing uh. Signalized crossing. Uh it's quite clear in uh in the OTM books that there is a minimum distance that it needs to be away from signals. Uh to implement a P X O crossing. Um and unfortunately, they're 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 just within that minimum distance.
Understanding that they may be within the minimum distance, but they are currently operating. Uh would that necessarily restrict us from um spr- sprucing them up?
Again, it it would. It would can't, it would. It would depend on where they are proposing the commemorative crosswalk. Um the policy would speak to where they would be applicable and where they would not be. Um so like I said, it would have to be brought forth if someone was looking at sprucing up the. The courtesy crossings with the commemorative crosswalk, we could look at it at that time once this policy is in place.
Anyone else? I see no one else, have you got a resolution? Um floors, I call a question on that, all those. Um floors, I call a question on that. All those in favor? Is carried, thank you. Uh reading your bylaws number fifty two zero on.
That council gives three readings to approve by law sixty two dash twenty five being a bylaw to set water with water and wastewater charges for twenty twenty six. By law sixty three dash twenty five being a bylaw to confirm the proceeding is canceled, that was a regular meeting on October first twenty twenty five. And by law sixty four dash twenty five being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between incorporation of the town of Elmer. And trio of perfect systems for the level prepares that lead to something to come to us.
Lower your second, Council Chairman, Deputy Mayor Barber. Any question, you don't, you know, saying now, all those in favor? Is carry helping with, are there any inquiries by members? Any statements by members? Council De Rosy.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to share that I was fortunate to win. I was fortunate to win a complimentary registration to attend the Western uh Ontario Works Office Conference TV place tomorrow through Friday in London. So I'm very much looking forward to attending, representing the town of Elmer, engaging with municipal leaders across Western Ontario. And learning more about regional collaborations and economic development initiatives that benefit our community. Thank you.
I understand that uh Council Ryan is online now. And uh he wants to make a comment on something. And Council Ryan, if he volley joined recently, uh.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me? Owen, nod your head. Owen, nod your head if you can hear me. Yes.
Yes.
Um. Yes, um uh thank you for everything that happened tonight. It is, it is, um I'm sorry that I wasn't there and uh that I wasn't voting on this. But I just wanted everyone to know my stance on it and I I do apologize for not being there. Um. It, I don't believe that what we should be doing is spending money on on a library that we can't afford. Um I know you guys already voted on it, but I just wanted to state my stance on it. Um. We don't have the money. We shouldn't be doing it. We should be putting it somewhere where we can afford it. Um so I am just. I guess here making a fool of myself, talking about what I think should be happening.
I'm sure you're not making a fool of yourself, but thank you for uh signing it and giving us your your comments. Um, for the, anyone else? Statements, what's on the status? Uh I don't. I I don't have any for it. And I don't know this at all.
No, me, give me.
No, no, uh there's no meeting called the public, the need of motion, your journey. Uh the council.
Yeah, I'm in, Council. So De Rosy. Yeah, the council announcement hundred thirty two P I.
All those in favor?
You know, I wish we were past ten, yeah. I totally was brilliant today.